But they like to know what they're gonna vote on before they have to vote on it. So it's good that you came to the workshop.
Is everybody ready?
Yes.
Don, you can see a burning workshop, 95394, 2024, Kansas, Kansas, and a data point.
Emily Fodder, thank you for letting us be here today. We ask that you guide the council, help them to make the best decisions for the city and the community, and keep everyone in our community safe. Then we follow God and protect our country and the leaders. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I play the lead.
No, you're sure.
And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What happened during?
Oh, this is an election. There, that's right, that's what I said.
No. I didn't get it out of this room, is all I'm saying. If you say you don't have to do anything with your money in there.
Okay.
You might just go back.
Well, first of all, she said you need to ask.
Well, the council chamber, the air conditioner, we need to talk to y'all about that.
Okay.
And then we did the budget for $1,200 to rent the gym out to Tim and $150 for the old fire department. But we haven't started it because y'all have to do a contract. So we wanted to see if we could get that going.
Okay, so three, four. I just walked over there, four.
Three. Well, Circle K.
Oh, three.
Okay, sure. So number one, representatives from Circle K?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'll name a few names.
Yeah, Barrett, Southie Nathan.
I'm Chris Leon.
We're both with, we're with MDM, but we represent Circle K. We're the MDMs of the engineer record and the designer for the project.
Do you have the call?
Yes, so project's pretty straightforward. You know, we got a couple little nuanced things we're dealing with here on this project that we would not normally do. You're probably looking at that landscape plan in front of you. So that besides being a C store and, you know, with gas sales, some of the little extras that we're gonna do on this project, if you look at the landscape on the left side, you can see all those dark trees there. That's all buffer, landscape buffer we're putting in. So you've got a, basically a 20-foot-wide pipe C landscape buffer along this abut residential here. And we've also got a six-foot-high fence. We may look at extending that down here so we can, you know, that'll come in some later subsequent provisions. As far as the, we always get a lot of questions on the illumination and the lighting. So the site lighting that we put on these sites is shielded. It basically, and we do that so you don't have a lot of spill off, you know, around to the neighborhood.
And pictures of it are in that one that you've got, right?
Right. The elevations, you know, for the building, these are, these are the new prototype conceptual elevation. So it's a good-looking building. Y'all may have known Circle K in the past. We just went through a big update on the building type. So the last page will show you what, you know, facade of the building is. So it's a little bit of a historical with some modern elements, but, you know, it's got basically a brick facade to it. It's pretty sharp if you go to Bonifay down the road. Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good-looking building. So that's what we're proposing here. Nothing crazy with the colors. It's all pretty neutral, neutral colors and, you know, the only thing you have that's really Circle K branded is the signage there. We do get a lot of questions usually about the fuel system. So the fuel system that Circle K uses is basically the latest and greatest. It's a double-wall fiberglass tank system. So what that does is prevents any, you know, external leak. So if there was a ever-to-be a failure, which there's usually not, but very, very rare in those type of tank systems, it's actually a double-wall tank. So it has brine filled outer layer, which if there's ever a leak in the main tank, it actually captures and overflows into the second wall containment. And then all the piping underground is also double-wall pipe. So your dispenser sumps tube, double-wall pipe, and then the system is monitored 24/7 by a leak detection system. So if there was ever a leak or usually before it gets to that point, there's some type of pressure drop-off, the whole system shuts off, and that system remotely monitored by Circle K. So state-of-the-art, very expensive system for them to put in, but that is, that is what they use now, which is pretty much the best you can get in the market currently. There are two stormwater ponds here. The stormwater pond, the first one is behind the building on the north side. And it's a little bit hard to see. You can see the light contour lines. And the second one is to the south, past the canopy area. Both of those stormwater ponds are basically, they're not supposed to be wet ponds. They're two feet deep, they're pretty shallow. They're typically gonna be dry ponds, and it's a four-to-one slope. So you're not gonna see a huge retention pond out there. It's gonna be a very shallow, shallow type of pond. All the water, we're treating on-site. So the water, if there was an overflow, would go to the, there's a county flume to the north.
On Court.
Yeah, on Court Avenue there. But that's, that's for emergency only. So all the water is designed for a hundred-year storm event. That's why you have two there, to basically retain on-site. So we're not gonna be pushing any, any storm off-site unless there was an overflow situation. But these, both these ponds are oversized for the design. So, and then you have main drive access off of Main Street there and Court Avenue. But all in all, that's, you know, the project in a nutshell, and we're looking forward to it. You know, a couple of things that we typically not do here is all this landscaping on the backside, but we really wanna, we need to do that for this project because we're, we have that, you know, residential abutment, and we need to buffer that. So other than that, though, you know, it's pretty straightforward. Are there any questions that I can answer? Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I have one. On the retention ponds, will they be fenced?
So right now, and I misspoke earlier, I think I said they were fenced. They are not fenced because of the depth. So they're not going to be, you know, super-deep ponds. But if that's a request, we can certainly visit that. Those would be about two feet, two feet deep as proposed right now. So just basically a slight, you know, depression and dry. No, no water's supposed to be held in those, except for periods of rain. And then, you know, deplete as necessary. But at the moment, right now, there's no fencing there. Typically, we don't show fencing on those just because we, from, a lot of municipalities don't want the eyesore of it. But if that's a request, we can certainly look at that.
It was just a question.
Sure.
When you say you treat the water in the retention pond, can you go more in-depth than that?
Yes, ma'am. So basically, when we say that, the nutrient loading and the medium of the sand and what we plant in there with the hydro seeding and how the pond is designed, it filters out any heavy nutrients as they percolate through the ground. So basically, if there's any residual oil, there's no gas that's ever gonna get in there. But, you know, just basic stormwater nutrients and overload from fertilizer, et cetera. So the stormwater design is designed to treat that, okay, and percolate through the, basically, the first foot of the ground, and it stops, and then your groundwater disperses. So that, we call it treating. It's not like a chemical.
That's what I was, yeah.
It's basically a big filter design.
I was, yeah, I have some, a small organic area beside it, and I was just wondering.
No, yeah, no, nothing like that. Just, well, we say that the engineering term for it is treatment, but yeah, it's basically filtration only.
And the importance, I know that they're gonna do it anyway, what she was saying about the double wall, but the proximity to our wells, Wells 1 and 2 is not that far. So that was one of the things that they had to take into consideration as well.
Right, so we did a well pit study there. So we're out of any impact to any, any water wells. Yeah, this one, the intent would be, it should be mowed just because it's gonna primarily be a dry pond. It'll only hold water really when there's a big storm event, but the intent for it is to be pretty shallow and percolate, so.
Can you guarantee Circle K will make that? Can you get the city something, right, is that, that will be mowed, maintained?
By Circle K?
Yeah.
Sure, let me, I'll ask them about that and see what their maintenance, what they do. I'm not super familiar with their maintenance side, but yeah, we can, we can find out for you. I think the city's concerned, right, is that just becoming overgrown and trash thrown in there, just the eyesore, right?
We have a retention pond and another business that's not fenced or anything. It does hold water, and it's right next to a park at the parking lot, and there's.
Trash.
They've gotta take off, yellow caution taken for that.
Okay.
Safety and trash and standing water. And that was the reason I asked about the fence before we talked, because it's a lot too.
It's not, that one also is not designed to hold water? But we are in a area that holds water?
Sure.
So that's like, we have alligators in that one that's not supposed to hold water and that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, I got you, okay.
Chad, just send me something also. What would the projected start and completion date be if everything go? I know y'all still have to go to the planning commission, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
I think in December.
The zoning is correct on this, right, from our understanding, so.
I think that's why y'all are here, because for planning to approve it to go to the planning commission, you just have to ask for that. I think it's the, probably why you put the 20-foot barrier, 20-foot of plants in there. I'm not sure, I can't remember honestly, but I think that was, there was a list of things. And that normally, it doesn't have to be addressed, but the city in the past has asked for you to come to the, for anybody to come to the council on that situation. Which I can reach out to Dawn tomorrow, but I think that's the thing y'all are going to planning in December.
Juan has been handling that with us, so I'm not super familiar there, but I will, I'll ask her. So the timing on the project, once, typically, once the plans are approved, it's about, you know, once plans are approved, they go out for bid. Circle K's, you know, got a select group of GCs in this area up here that they use. And it's about a month after that, and then construction about two weeks after that. So I would say, from where we're at right now, probably about, I'd say, five to six months out from, from starting construction. That's hard for me to estimate, though I don't, you know, I'm not on the kickoff side of that on Circle K's side, but that's what we typically see with, with the designs, is once the design's done, and that, that's really, we, if we, we go as fast as we can, but really dependent on the city-county process.
Circle K outfiting looks pretty good, I mean, they took the back and stuff.
I'm excited to see it.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, it's impressive.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be a sharp-looking building, and the, the new design is really nice. It doesn't, their old buildings used to be real bright and not kind of mismatched, but these new buildings look, look good. And we, you know, all the, you know, even Montgomery, Alabama, to, you know, town Florida, a lot of historic towns and cities, I think that, you know, the new prototype, it blends pretty well. It doesn't jump out at you as something.
Yeah, but tone it down some.
Right.
Well, it used to be bright, right?
Right.
How you guys on grocery store? We need a grocery store.
Yeah. Well, I wish I could help you there. We need to, what, do you guys wanna see their Publix or?
Costco.
Costco. Now, they do a bunch of, they, Circle K's new kitchen designs, they're doing a lot of fresh, fresh food. I don't know if you've seen.
It's pretty good.
It is pretty good.
Yeah.
They've got the crispy crunchy chicken and a lot of, you know, they're, they're competing with a lot of the other brands right now, and the main push there is to have a lot of fresh-cooked food, not a lot of, you know, all-packaged stuff like it was before. So there's probably be a pretty good selection in there.
Well, I can get with Dawn tomorrow at planning to see exactly what you need the council to vote on for. But I think it would just have the presentation to, at the workshop so that if they needed to do anything, they could do it at the meeting.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for them? I think we're pretty much all in agreement, and we're really excited, and we'd like to say this out.
All right, good deal. Well, we appreciate your time and look forward to the, to the project and look forward to getting done.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, take care.
Be safe.
Thank you. Uh, no, y'all, you can keep it, I guess. Take care, thank you.
Thank you. Number two, discussion of line of credit for the grants. Candace is giving us a brief explanation.
We've got a set station coming up, and it's a $1,075,000 grant. And it is not one that we get to send an invoice in and get the money and then pay the invoice. Obviously, you all know that we can't. And invoicing would main, stay around $250,000. We wouldn't be invoiced for more than about $250,000 at the time, but that's not something the city has. I did speak, so I did a Zoom with a person at First Federal that does that today so that I could present to y'all what he said. And he said that the governor last year did a thing for small cities that are in kind of the poverty level that we're in, where we didn't have to do this, but according to Dale, we, we would have to pay first and get reimbursed. So he said that before we move forward and have to pay anything, he's gonna reach out to another county that he worked with last year on a project and see what he can find out so that maybe we'll be able to apply for that. I just don't know what it is because it's not a CDBG grant. For our CDBG grants, we can do that. We can send in the invoice, and they pay us, and then we pay the bill. But if, if it's not something we can do that way, we would need a line of credit for about $250,000 to be able to, to maintain this project because there's really no other way to do it.
So do you think you'll have that information to you soon?
I think so, but I wanted to go ahead and get it started before we got much farther, you know, in it and put something out for bid that we can't pay for. So, and it is something the city needs. It's, to me, one of the most important grants that we have out there because it's gonna bring in a lot of revenue for the city. So we need to figure out the, the money.
So it's, we're gonna have to vote on?
You'll have to vote, but that's what I was bringing it for. I was hoping today he was gonna say, oh, you can just do this, and then, you know, when it's time, we'll have it. But since he brought up, I said, well, let's see what we can find out. So I'm sending Tiffany at First Federal a copy of the contract, the, because it's an appropriations grant with the state instead of the CDBG, and see what we can find out over the next few days. But it's something we do gotta be starting on now so that, you know, it doesn't come time to put it for bid, and then we can't even do the grant. Do you know anything about, about the appropriations grants and getting money? Yeah, the First Federal man, his name's Wesley, he said that, that the governor put something into effect last year for this kind of situation, and he worked with the county or the city. So he's, he's reaching out to them to see if he can find out more about it. But at the worst, we need about a $250,000 line of credit in order to proceed, you know, with the grant.
Is that next week, if we have to vote on that in the next meeting?
Yeah, because we have to, if we do a line of credit, we have to have in the minutes exactly how late the bank needs it burdened and all that. I wanna make sure we had it, our stuff together.
Yeah, if we find out that a lot of credit is the way we have to go, is voting on our next meeting in the timeline?
Yeah, yeah, because it's not gonna go out in the bid before the end of the year, but we sure don't need to put it out.
Okay.
And then, and then can't do anything with it. Because that's just more money to pay Dale, because he's been working on it for three years.
Sometime you find the contractor that will finance the whole project.
But, you know, it depends on how many different levels of contractors, too, that they have to bring in, one for engine, I mean, one for electrical, one, you know, all the different things.
Yeah, a lot of times you're finding that you got a contractor, at least you're digging a profit margin, you'll finance the whole thing.
So we gotta make it work one way or another. He's gonna bring in a lot of revenue from the city, and that's something we need.
So maybe you'll find out.
I hope to know.
Some good news. You know, if not, then we'll, we'll deal with it, I think.
Yep, so that's what I had on my app.
Okay, number three, on-call paper for you.
Well, with the budget, how y'all did the budget, and that's what they're doing. One of them takes the phone for however many days, and they're on-call. So if they don't get any, if they don't get a call, they get $35 for that day. And if they do, then they go clock in and, and get the money. But Chad, for animal control, he's on-call. He's always on-call. And I didn't know how y'all wanted to handle that because some days he doesn't get calls for several days, but then he may spend 20 minutes and have five calls, you know? And so I wasn't sure how y'all wanted to do that. Because he should be compensated something. He hadn't been turning in anything to the city because he wasn't, we weren't sure how to do it. Any suggestions?
I just think if I heard we sent him to the school people last fall, we never discussed any being at Circle K or anything.
He is, right? He shouldn't do that, so.
Has he been working up to earn time yet?
Well, what happens is some weekend, like he might, he had five calls a couple of weeks ago one night for different things, and he has to stop. And it might be a five-minute call or a 20-minute call. He may have to come in, or he may not have to come in, but he should be compensated something for his time.
And you say we can do that, right?
For the, for the guy, for whoever has the phone that night, but his, he always has the phone. It's like, me and Jason always have the phone, you know? So that's what I was trying to figure out for Chad.
So Howard, they're doing, yeah, the employees are doing it. Y'all are rotating on-call?
A week, one week.
Oh, a week, and it's being rotated?
Yeah.
With all of you?
Yeah. The only time I do it is when they need, like Chad's been on vacation. When he was on vacation, Rusty and Logan do it nonstop. So I don't, for the weekend, just give him a break, basically.
They, they're getting paid $35 a week when they're on-call?
No, they get paid $35 a day.
On-call?
On-call, instead of the two-hour callback pay that they were getting.
See, if you was to give Chad the two-hour callback, five calls, that's 10 hours right there. I mean, so.
So it's $35 a day?
So it's, it'd be easier to do something for him.
You'd be $35 a day? Well, no.
Because if he gets, you know, the old way, if he would get a call, come in for a cat, and just say he can't catch it, that's two hours. And then he gets back to the house, they called, he comes, you know, that's another call, you know? We're just trying to save money the best way we can, but then compensate him, too.
But basically, he's, he's all, he's never off.
Really?
He's off because he's on-call.
Right, yeah.
So $35 a day isn't feasible to the city to.
Not really, not, I don't think so.
Yeah, and I don't know how to come up with that there.
Unless we're just not gonna have animal, take any animal calls after hours.
Because then you're running, like, you're running a problem then. Like, if he's on-call with a phone, and then he gets a call from the city, and then he gets home, he gets a call for an animal, then you got two more call, that's, you know? What's it?
And the animals cost the city money no matter how, any way you go about it, it's costing the city money.
It's killing us. What is the legality of not coming in?
No, you're not required to. It's not, you're not required to provide any animal control services.
Because it costs us, I think it's, what, $55?
57, 57.50 per animal. So if he picks up a cat with 10 kittens?
Every kitten, that's 57.50.
Yeah, and I think it's, when we went and spoke with the county about it, if we went with the county, it was gonna be like 70.
And more.
70-something dollars per animal.
Yeah.
Plus a, I think it was a yearly permit, if I recall, when that was in?
I don't remember.
It was a lot more.
And that's why we went with Chad doing it.
Yeah.
So either weekends.
And the problem with like, well, you go get a cat from somebody, all they gotta say is, oh, it's not my cat. And you say you can't charge them. So, I mean, if they just say it's not my cat, how you gonna prove it's their cat? I mean, so the city's out 57.50 right there, plus the call-out, so we're losing money.
Early voting is ended at Saturday. Are y'all here for early voting?
Yeah.
So just tomorrow from 7:00 to 7:00?
7:00, 7:00.
Yeah, sorry about that. They do.
I have to ask her.
So either we can do.
So we just don't do animals at night?
And at night.
Or the weekends?
Yeah.
I don't think the county responds to animal calls at night.
Is it, is it, any quality? Sheriff's Department calls them.
Well, unless it's a.
I had the sheriff's department involved when my cat got mauled by my neighbor's dog. They did not respond to the dog until the next day. And I did, and the sheriff's department wasn't involved with that.
That's what I see.
Like, just say I'd like to get some deer here, deer, chickens, maybe something like that.
You have to take the call, well, you can take the call, but take a message for the next day.
I don't see him going out.
That saves a lot of money.
I don't see him going out at night.
Yeah.
He'd get no animal.
I say, unless he catches one, unless they call and say, the animal's in the cage, then he only has like 12 hours. He cannot leave that animal, that's part of what, he cannot leave that animal in the cage. So he would have to come get it if they called him and said.
With that animal in the cage.
Well, I'm saying he can't leave it more than 12 hours. So if they call at 6:00.
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday, he's gonna have to go out and get.
We didn't talk about that. Just at night, though. It's why I was saying past 5:00, just don't go get one. If there is an emergency where he has to, then he should get some kind of call.
A regular callback or something.
That's not, yeah.
Or only, or only be able to call on Saturdays, so you don't run into that 12-hour problem.
Yeah, that's for you.
Yeah.
Just do Saturdays and Sundays on the call-out. On Sundays, you could.
You can wait until Monday.
If you make a Monday, then make it Monday then.
But Saturday, you can't.
That's a lot.
So are we in agreement that no after-hours except on Saturday, on a call-out? And then he, I mean, if somebody calls and says, hey, there's a kitten on my front porch, it's not necessary that he actually go out Saturday and get it. It can take place on Sunday. But if we still give him compensation, because I, I mean, he is doing, I met a dog.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess if everybody's in agreement, we'll put that on the agenda.
Yeah, put that by now on the weekend or Saturdays?
An emergency call-out, another pass father in the week?
So what, you can't?
It's fine with me, I just wanted to make sure he got compensated, but also didn't cost the city much money.
While we're bringing, while you brought that up, this is something else that can't somebody won't think about. Candace is doing the same thing. She's taking phone calls when she's at home, home side of the county, in 200 calls, after-hours. She's, she's having to do those same type of things, and she's not saying anything about it. about it. But I have it going on, it's been going on, we all know that, and I think that we should try to do something, so, I mean, I don't know what, we need to do something for her to, because she's literally, she has the city phone with her all the time, and I know for a fact that she's having to leave her house when she wasn't at work, wasn't supposed to be at work, and come in at, appear at night to handle something. So you need to figure out somehow to pay her something extra for doing that.
We don't talk about that when I'm not here.
You're always at the meeting. And I can't talk to about it outside of here.
I don't know, yeah. Well, anyway, I'm good though. Y'all, I'm just, was worried about Chad. Really, we'll figure it out.
Okay, y'all will be thinking about it, we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Put that on the agenda.
Have an idea, yes. Good, that'll let you face Candace, and y'all put your heads together, so we can come up with another meeting. Now we will make Candace red-faced meeting, okay, there you go. Um, okay Candace, uh, the air conditioning in the gym and, uh, fire department.
So y'all approved the fifty-five hundred for the council, and now they said they can't get the compressor for six to eight months.
And you can connect the other end.
And a new condensing unit's fourteen thousand.
Okay, is there anyone that you can call, another company, I know we've put that out.
Mr. Gary said he was gonna reach out to somebody.
I can do it, I can do it.
Okay, but, yeah, it's very, it's old, I guess that's one of having a problem, it's gotta come from Europe or somewhere.
We don't need to wait six months.
Well, we don't wait now. We don't need the air conditioner now.
No, we need the other one done until there's something.
Yeah, the, can't replace the floor in until, because of humidity in there, but I'm just saying, we don't, and we can move back to that room too, uh, that's bigger, but still.
The longer that room sits, like, the worse.
The worse it's gonna be. So, we're reaching out to more people, but just letting y'all know the first end of the deal is, but, yeah.
That's a whole new system.
Well, no, that's just new condensing unit, because it's a double compressor condensing unit, because it's so large.
Can we look into a split unit or something that would work?
Probably.
Well, I'll have to.
Probably do that whole thing for three thousand dollars. The only thing is, the way this school was, system was designed, when this unit's on, it's also blowing into the hallway, so the only air and heat in the hallway comes from when these side units are on. But, I mean, it's a lot of difference in price for, you could probably do a split unit, like I said, for three thousand dollars, for that. That's just me guessing, but.
Well, maybe we should look into that, and see.
Jason, you know the square footage of that room? We can get it tomorrow, takes it to.
And then, the other thing was, we did the amounts for the, the gym and, um, all of our department, but we gotta have a contract, and then getting up the sign.
You should have drafted it.
You did, you drafted one, so is that?
We both have them?
Or you, you say? Not for the fire department.
Yeah, I'll, I'll throw that out.
But, do we have to vote on, since they approved it in the budget, do we, or do they have to vote on the contract?
I would, y'all probably vote on me three minutes.
Okay. And then what is?
And as it is, they don't have one right now anyway, so.
So it would have started October first, but since we didn't have a contract, I have a bill.
That's what that'll end in the next one.
And then Shaq's in. Oh, a bunch, okay, let's see. Oh, the person that was gonna do the hydrant testing passed away, I think, I didn't, I tell somebody that? Anyway, passed away, and so we had to go get other bids on that.
No, that was with the other thing, that truck or something.
Oh, that, yeah, so there's two, okay, so he got a quote for painting the hydrants, he got a quote for annual maintenance and flow test on the hydrants, he got a quote for, and the calls in New Hope, by the way, that's where he's at.
Yeah.
He got a quote for, this may be, no, preventative maintenance on the engine and tanker. That's doing the oil and all the, all the things that have to be done with that. So that one's thirty-five hundred some dollar, I'll have one for y'all for the meeting, but painting them is five thousand, and the hydrant annual, so to have them annually tested and the flow test done is fifty-five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the estimate.
And that's required annually?
Yes, sir. So I can have that at the meeting? In the, for the meeting?
But it's not installing fire hydrants. Send me that.
Anything in that, Mr. Gary said about the installing fire hydrants?
I don't know this well. It is not.
I don't think that this company does it, I think it was a.
Where do I install fire hydrants? All contracts install fire hydrants, they're on the project, I think, I talked to you there.
You talked to who?
Zach about it. Yeah, I think they do. The one guy that Shaq had, he, he didn't do it, the one, he didn't wanna do it, but I think they do.
So you're saying there's somebody on the fire department, or he's.
No, I'm sorry, when Shaq brought this up the first time, the guy that he had, I talked to him on the phone, and he didn't want, I guess, he didn't want to do it, install it. I asked him about doing installations, like one was messed up, you know, and like we have one, when they, over there on Church Street, and Gary's, you know, would they install it, he said he just, he didn't do it.
And just do the flood test?
Yeah, but his company made, you know, he didn't do it, so. Well, Jason, let me ask you a question, why can't we install them? I mean, I can do it, but I'm.
Do you know how to do it?
No. You wanna know the truth?
That's what I'm asking.
I'll, I'll try everything I can to do it.
I mean, if it's not solid, you.
And I would be pretty honest and say.
I mean, I've never done it, so if I do it, and your house burns down, or if I do Gary's, his house burns down, like right now, DEP knows his is offline, so we're good. So if something happens, we don't get in trouble.
You're good.
But if I put it in, and I'm not certified, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, don't you have to get somebody to certify? I think we're supposed to have somebody that's certified. Certified person to do that.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's pretty simple to do, but I just don't.
I think it should be a certified person. Candace, can you reach out to the city chief, let's see if they have somebody there that's certified to do it in one?
Well, Matt, which is Nikki's husband, she had asked him about it, and he's, he said that Jason did not need to install the fire hydrant, that it needed to be a licensed company to install the fire hydrant. I don't know anything about them, I'm just telling you that the fireman's.
I would think, I would think it should be somebody certified. Yeah. I could be.
But, no matter what, either way, like Mr. Gary said, he, 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 he's not good if, if, if there's, there's fire down there, we need to find somebody to do it.
Been there for three years.
Yeah, we need them fixed.
So we have hydrants, I, I mean, I got some from when they done the construction on the road too.
Well, we have two brand-new ones sitting there, one for his and one for Church Street.
Like Church Street, and then it's a separate thing, they get a, both and both.
Yeah, but Mr. Gary, if something was to happen, and somebody wasn't certified, he goes in there, oddly putting one together.
From me?
Around me, and he'll say, he doesn't know how to do it.
Well, the city of Appalachia, their city department puts them in, but they have to hire a company to come out and test them and everything before they can be put into that.
City chief, it's the same process.
That's why I asked for the call, ask Candace, yeah, it was the city.
They still had to be inspected.
They still had to have somebody?
Yeah.
Before you can use them?
Right.
Okay, so I'll call Chipley tomorrow and ask them who they haven't spent, and, well, I'll report back to y'all and then.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? No, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Whoa, whoa, Mr. Johnson, I've got something.
Sorry. I didn't hand that down, I promise.
It's not really important, uh, I mainly came over here to talk to y'all and let you know what we are planning on doing, and to get y'all some support in it. We're, uh, in the process of starting up a search and rescue here in Washington County. Uh, it'll be a nonprofit search and rescue, but it will work in conjunction with the chef department, the fire departments, uh, fire coordinator, all on board with it, and we've been working for eight years to get this going. The biggest problem is gonna have is once we get our 501(c)(3) and we get it been going, is we have to have an area that we can hold meetings once a month to stay in conjunction with a 501(c)(3). And that's where I was gonna ask Vern if they was, anyway, y'all had something or ideas that we could use once a month just to hold a meeting of an evening. But we're gonna get a search and rescue, and we'll have, uh, access to size-to-size, horseback, foot soldiers, uh, uh, tracking dogs, cadaver dogs, uh, we can get, uh, military divers in if we need them, but it's certified and rescue dive, if our dive team here is not, not capable of doing it at the time. Uh, it's in conjunction with the Gulf County Search and Rescue, I've been on with them for over ten years, and we've been trying to get a branch up this way, and we've been battling that for five years, but our fire coordinator has been our biggest problem keeping it from happening, but we got a fire coordinator now that's on board with it a hundred percent, and it's helping us push it to get it on in here. And I just wanted to let y'all know what we were planning on doing for the county as a whole, so that, you know, y'all can get on board, you know, back us whatever, you know, give us your support, and that's, that's the main reason why I'm here tonight.
I have two questions. One, I've called out, what is your name?
John Williamson.
And two, all the equipment and everything that, that you're talking about, you gathered out, you have a place for that, right? You're, you're asking the city for it.
Uh, what we'll do with equipment, it will be part to individual members' houses, so that if we get a call, they've got immediate access to it. All we need is just a, a meeting area, just to, to have a meeting like y'all have here twice a month, we do it once a month.
How many people?
Uh, right now, it's gonna be a small group, but we're looking, uh, eventually to have about a hundred people total, and another thing search and rescue would do for the community, and a lot of people don't realize this, is Donnie Minchew is the president in Gulf County. Uh, everything is run on donations and fundraisers, it's not costing the cities, the county, a red seat, it's all volunteers, we raised some money ourselves, but Donnie has gotten it up to the point, and we hope to do that here, that eventually, we can give out anywhere from one to four scholarships a year, with search and rescue.
Well, we've got the rooms here, and we've got the community center.
And I know y'all fixing to be doing work on the community center, but it's not something we've got to have immediately, I just wanted to come in and.
Let you still have a place to dedicate some.
Right, we've got a lot to do yet before we get there, so it'd be probably February mark, somewhere in that area, before we finally kick off.
So, if the community center is under construction at that time, there's rooms in here, I mean?
Yeah, at that time, we, we'll probably be twenty members at that time getting, getting started up, until we get things rolling good, and then we'll, we'll start expanding out a lot more.
But when you get things the way you want them, that way we'll know if the community center, because the issue's gonna be, when are you gonna have them, like, if it's gonna be if you're a business hours, and you're giving you a room in here or something to do it, then there's.
Well, what we're brought to is of an evening, because most people work, you know, there's volunteers, they work on regular jobs.
Yes, right.
It'd be of an evening, and it'll only be like an hour, hour and a half meeting at the most.
Well, that's why I'm saying, they'd need some, like code and keys.
Right.
They thought that we would have to talk about it at that point, but, I mean, I'm excited that y'all have been doing that for the county.
Well, we got a lot of people moving in here, we got a lot of kids coming into the area, raised on asphalt and concrete, they get out here in these woods a hundred yards, somebody gotta find them.
I'm sure that there's, when the town comes, move, move in the mountains.
And like with the kid that receded a couple of years ago, uh, we have boats, we have, have people trained for that, and it'd make a big difference if you can get a, a quick response of people on the ground.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. John, and like I said, I'm sure you get ready, we'll know better what's wrong with the community center, I'm sure.
I know a few of y'all, I used to know everybody here for a little while. Well, thank you, big time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will tell y'all, if I can, just real quick, that they did around nineteen hundred dollars at the haunted house, and that was just three days worth, you know, next, and the first time, so, and they've already got people that used to do the haunted house, volunteering their stuff and their time for next year, and making it bigger and having more people, so they're excited about that. Um, and then they would run it like all four weekends in October, so could really be a good, this year it paid for basically what they bought, you know, but now we have all that stuff.
That's what you do in your bag.
That they don't have to have next year.
And all of that, and I've been thinking, excellent thinking about that from everybody.
Yeah. I went in with Britain and his, and his little boy into it, whatnot. Yeah, we had fun.
They had good security over there than they did at the door.
One little child ran out of his shoes, and ran out of his shoes and out and down the hallway, and then Jason, when the fireman had a break, he missed.
Oh, no. Yeah, better to the door.
I make the paperwork here.
Eight seconds. Call a driver?
Uh.
Driver.